Call to order our council meeting. Ask Stevie if he would leave us some.
Read the reasons through the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh now open for public comment, any anyone signing up for a public comment during the council meeting, gentlemen? All right, three minutes.
Three minutes, I'll try to get through three minutes. Just wanted to come give uh my side, explain to y'all what happened at my house. Um I think it was April fifth that we gave all the floods. My basement flooded real bad. I thought it was just water coming in like it does in the basement. Um I heard some noise from one of the septic things, one of the things outside. I found one of the guys, JR, I believe his name was, one sewer guy as he came and looked, actually told me the one that was making noise was not mine, okay? But he would have, he came inside and looked at it and what he found, what we found together was my standpipe from my washing machine, water was just flowing back into the house. Um so he went and checked mine. He went and manually, I think he called it firing the pump, he drained out the tank. Once he did that, he emptied out that tank and none of my pipes were emptying. Um so what we, we've happened was, what I believe happened was that tank wasn't firing. He came and replaced a bunch of stuff in there, he manually fired it but wasn't automatically firing. It filled up the pipe. Then the pipe clogged because all the solid had nowhere to go. Um so I asked him whose responsibility that was, he said it's mine. I was pretty aware that, you know, my responsibility to the thing. So I dug out to try to see what was going on, I had a plan to come out to see what was going on. The two main issues that we found we had is when the city installed the sewer in what was the early eighties, instead of bypassing the original septic, they hooked into the septic. Two, JR called it a candy cane pipe, said I was supposed to have one, I did not have one. So I told him I was going to go get one, he said no, he was going to get it, which tells me that that's the city's responsibility to have that candy cane till if there's an overflow, it doesn't come back in the house. I did not have that, I just had a normal clean out spot. So like I said, I think what we think happened was the pump quit working, filled the pipe, filled the septic, and the end of the septic clogged up because it had nowhere to go. So I just wanted to come and kind of give my side of what I found in all this. And I believe y'all, I believe y'all have numbers and different things that I've looked into to resolve the issue with bringing in, you know, plumber to fix it, to bypass the septic, some other things. So.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Considering, consideration of regular council minutes from February twenty fifth and March twenty fifth.
On March twenty fifth. It um almost to the end, it says Ricky passed her motion to amend mobile food truck, that was me. And it was Stevie who seconded, not Kurt. Remember Kurt kept, he asked me on that twice to repeat my motion. Yep, that's it for March. And I did not hear the, let me see.
I didn't see it here.
I didn't see it.
I got it, you know.
Make the motion to approve the March. But the adjustments. Chris makes a motion to approve the March minutes, Ricky seconds it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? About the uh February three? There was some question to that one, why not? Just let me give me time to read it. Make a motion to approve the February minutes. Chris makes motion to amend or approve those minutes from February the second? Make a second, some new discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is consideration of regular replacement of minutes from April eighth.
I think I was looking at Chad because there was some amendments to the minutes that I can get from the minutes. Is it the meeting, the addition things?
Okay. Yeah, what's the? Yeah. Make a motion, motion to approve the next one. Okay, Chris. Chris makes a motion to approve the next meeting, Ricky seconds it? Or seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh the next item is uh over business. First item under over business, property code violations.
Mr. Mayor, um council, um we are going to court, just for redid status on the property thirty three seven three, how are we able to meet more? That's property just Estes, and so that, that's set for being made the sixth. Ongoing uh scenario with one oh five Hoover Road, that had been resolved in court with the ability to bring it back. Let the court review it, that's John Stan. And I think Mr. Morrow had provided office its back uh to being a problem, it looked like, may I am a consultant, him. And you could take it from there. Good news, uh Mr. Udall, uh his property at two oh five Oakley Road. He was in court behind the attorney, and his property up, uh we're going well, that to conclusion as of today. Uh and that was resolved and reverse. So the court also on that, so his property is resolved. And that's what I have for the.
Come answer questions. Next item under the old business is.
What about High School Street, I mentioned?
Um. So. I'll go into my votes, and I need to follow up, I'll prove that one out, I'll follow up if you specifically.
Next item is uh second reading uh food trucks ordinance. That we passed. Last part, uh changing the amount that uh is required for anyone to set up food truck in the city of Charlotte.
Mayor, I'm just gonna remember the changes, so uh in section eight one oh four location, it also covers the amounts. The amount was reduced from fifteen dollars per truck per month for to a uh to reduce for an annual fifty one hundred dollars per truck per calendar year to be added to the city. And then the council had recommended in the first reading, with the frequency of the food truck determined by the private shopper owner and the food truck. And it's reflected again under hours operation. Also on the ice cream truck, we corrected those hours, same scenario of probably, the hours are determined by the private shopper owner. The next change uh took place uh under under eight one oh six mobile food services ordinance. That does not a permanent fee, you will be required to have an annual permit, there's no cost for the, to the, to the food truck. What there is, there is an initial application, so you get fifty dollars, and that's how we get to a hundred fifty. There's the changes more discussed and going on.
The only thing that that I kind of got some feedback on was the application fee. And I know we talked about it a little bit. We want to charge existing customers an additional fifty dollar application fee. So if they pay this year, they paid a hundred bucks, they want to renew uh their permit for next year, uh do we want to, do we feel like they need to be charged another fee for, for the fifty dollars? That's the only question that I have, I don't, based off of the research that I did, I don't believe the city of Dixie does that. I'd say it has to be like them, I'm just trying to compare it to people around. I guess that would, that okay. Yeah, it's for, so for like a, a repeat.
Then he, he doesn't pay or they don't pay the the application fee each year, they just, they pay.
Right, that's, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm bringing to the table, just.
Yeah.
Are you talking about like um, for example, that Dane Coffee? They've already got a permit, right, Jennifer? It's expired. And it expires in September. So if they come up right now and want to get a permit, they would pay the fifty dollar permit fee along with a hundred dollars, and then next year they would pay a hundred dollars.
Fifty, fifty dollar application fees is all I'm talking about.
Yeah.
They were, so if they were, if they had the permit for this year in January, if they wanted to pay a hundred dollars for a new year.
That's all they have to pay.
That's, that's what I'm proposing for an existing vendor in the city.
So they pay fifty, like, as an example, they pay their fifty dollar application fee, and then they pay fifty dollars for one month, and so with the new ordinance taken place, do they follow another fifty dollar application fee? Plus the hundred dollars, that's what I need to know, because.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of bringing up for discussion. Uh to me, my personal opinion is I'm not sure that there's, if it's an existing vendor that we already have records of and established within the city, I'm not sure that they need to pay an additional fifty dollar application.
Just a one-time application.
Sure.
They have to pay their application fee on this year.
And they're paying.
So but they still need to pay the hundred dollars.
Right. Yes.
Now, if we look at it, I thought we looked at an application. And we talked about it takes time to go through everything, and if there was changes, if they could make a change.
If I may object, I guess the question would be, uh what if someone skips a year? And they come back, they don't, they do twenty twenty five, but they don't do twenty twenty six, and they come back even for seven. Or are they?
Probably being new.
Yeah.
I would consider that a new vendor.
It's completely left up to you.
Sure, and there's, that's a perfect gray area situation though.
Sure. I guess you could say.
Yes.
The question is, do we want them to make application each year as they do for the permit?
No, we're not changing it pretty dramatically, like, fifty dollars. The market is to. So. There is a processing. The call office has to process it, the podium has to process. And quite frankly, you know, people may incorporate here, maybe uh or LLC, there's a number of things that they can do, maybe that's what you mentioned too. But it can, it can get confusing for folks that are trying to process it, so I think it's more planning the better. Again, uh it's up to you all, but I don't like the idea of just maybe just hang now, it's sort of, there's a, there's a process of going through and reviewing it and looking and making sure it's the same information that, you know, the proper documentation that's required. So that's part of the application, so. You gotta consider that.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a good, I think we have a good thought, and it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
So let me understand, one fifty dollar fee period per business or each year, every year?
I think related like it is, I think a hundred fifty dollars is cheap enough. That way they get confused and they just pay a hundred fifty dollars every year. I don't know what we call it, it's a hundred fifty dollars.
There are scenarios where you can pay a fifty dollar application fee and get denied if you don't meet all the other stuff, right, so. Right?
Yes, yes, yes. We need to make a motion. Make a motion to approve it? Ricky, you make the motion. Caleb seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh all right, pass the second reading, um. The next item under the old business is the ordinance for live stream. Which we do have that in our week, where we stream the council meetings now live on YouTube. I'm, I'm assuming they're, they're, what's the wrong there, they stay on there, they can go back and watch them.
I wanted to do that for the last one, so. Sounded good, too. I thought it sounded pretty good.
Well, I, I didn't watch it, I was kind of concerned with the sound.
I was too.
Would it be picking up everybody who talks?
I, I thought it did.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, I thought we were doing, not this for this council meeting, but.
It's, it's all, yeah, it's all council meetings.
I mean, like, the plannings, I'm working on the sewer, everything.
Uh it's just council.
Just typically, just regular council, council meetings, don't we all call a special call? That's what the ones provides for, it's not, it's not all.
It does have special call meetings down there.
So it's not working sessions?
Not work sessions, it's not like work sessions.
The motivation they have is that, that's why they're work sessions.
Okay. I stand, I make my motion to approve.
Caleb, second. Who's second?
Your first second.
Oh, okay, wait, I thought I heard second, sorry. Uh any other discussion? All those in favor, may I? Opposed? Okay, move on to the new business, um which we discussed this in uh in our work session, uh we need to see bids, uh to contract the uh replacement of some of our older sewer pots. And um so I guess the thing that we would need to decide, do, do we want to pursue the co- a contract route outside company, or do we want to or do I guess, do you want me to put my foot down a little harder, get our own guys to do it?
I mean, how long would it take?
I don't know, I don't know. I don't even know how long it would take, one of these contractors, probably wouldn't take them, once they get owned, it wouldn't take them but a few days or weeks, maybe a few weeks, I should say, not days.
They're gonna use the offer on point.
Uh yes.
Next year, I believe, right?
Yes.
The, just remember that the I don't think there's a number on how many pots, so is it understood that there's?
Per pot.
So if we go past the pots that we have, once they use the pots that we've already bought, are we saying completed?
Yeah, until, until we can get the bonds. As I said, we can get the bonds to replace.
To the left.
To buy more, but it's just more time. To it before the.
I want to make a motion to accept the junk house.
Doing all twelve or what? They, they will do all twelve.
I'll second.
Liam make some motion.
Hang on one second.
This is not what you discuss anyway, make a motion.
We can discuss that for a motion.
Yeah.
That's just spending thirty five thousand two hundred and twenty. Ricky, money man, is there enough money there to spend thirty five?
What's the all-in sum balance right now?
That's, that's sixty five thousand, that's the previous one.
Chris?
Make it clear, both pots. And after that, we'll go from there.
Yeah.
If we need to do a different.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. All right, motion's been made to award Gen Co construction the installing of the replacement of sewer pots, second was uh made by Steve Smith, uh all those in favor? Opposed? All right, next item was, we had a step we met out for the lives club to upgrade the electric service. We actually, as it, as we mentioned, we had two see, two bids. Uh one of them uh immediately was rejected because it stated in the proposal to replace hundred ounce service with a one hundred ounce service. And uh it was saying that they wanted to, or we wanted to upgrade from a one hundred ounce to a two hundred ounce. It's man's electric. And they were out of Calioka. Yes, yeah. It's only.
I'm gonna make a motion to reject, we did, we did that.
Second. Now Linda makes a motion to reject.
Put it up.
And put it up for bid, well, they don't need to be two separate motions.
Okay, I think it should be.
I'm gonna make a motion to reject.
I'll say.
Caleb seconds. Yes.
One suggestion for the next three bids to put a completion date.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I wish we would have done that with uh sewer pots too.
I'll make a motion to.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now.
I'm gonna make a motion to put it out for bid and put a date of completion on it.
Probably take that.
Twenty days.
Mr. Mayor, there is a package that Jason has prepared that was handed to me tonight to.
Yeah, we will, we will, we will take that up next, next meeting. Because I didn't receive it until today as well, so. Oh. Melinda make the motion to put it out, uh the three bid. Caleb seconds that one.
Did we want to add the thirty?
And add the thirty days, add thirty days for what now, Stephen?
From uh. After we accepted.
Okay, thirty days after we accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You second it, I'm sorry, I was wrong.
Caleb second. Melinda make the motion. Uh the next item was uh Mr. Summers uh residence at the St. Jenny's Place.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would put it into the council, do the nature of this, and do the main, the big thing, the ball, the organs, give me an opportunity to review it. We can take it up, well, I could not at the May next meeting.
I think a motion is.
Okay, motion's been made to defer, any decisions on that? Second?
I'll second.
Well, then the second's. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um some of you, I don't know if you picked up a agenda, leave us back there on the back, but the next item, the sewer tap for Caleb's story is being removed or was removed from the agenda tonight. Next item is uh the Todd Street uh area, the drainage. Uh and knowing we discussed that as well during our work session. I, I know that there's several representatives here, appreciate y'all coming. Uh I see Mr. Swen is here as well, which he was present with uh myself, uh Chad Morrow, which is uh kind of over our sewer. Uh basically does a little everything for the city, uh met with uh engineering firm Strand and Associates. Uh I received uh an email from them that covers basically everything we discussed that day that we met up there with them, and uh they are proceeding now uh with the actual uh recommendations uh that they're going to suggest, uh we will take those things, look into them. Uh and uh we, we want to get the problem fixed, I mean, that's, that's the goal. Uh we uh, you know, I hate to use this term. There might be a possibility to Band-Aid it. But that's all, we all know what a Band-Aid does. You know, it, it, it comes off, you know, after a few days. So we, we want to get this um issue up there fixed, get the water draining uh where it's supposed to drain and not in some of y'all's homes. Uh we wanted to get it to drain uh all the way down to the creek. And uh so uh we, we, we are addressing the issue and uh I know that sometimes things don't look as fast. But believe me, I, I believe this, this, this group and, and uh it's Strand Associates will work speedily so that we can get this thing put uh put in motion to start getting things done. And like I said, I, I do appreciate everybody showing up, um you know, I'm uh I really can't take any comments, but I, but I will speak to you afterwards. uh, I really can't take any comments, but I, but I will speak to you afterwards. But, uh, uh, but anyway, like I said, uh, I, I want to get the problem fixed. I mean, there's, you know, we, we've got a few issues, but we're going to address that one first.
What can you not take comments or discuss?
Pardon?
What can you not take comments or discuss?
Uh, well, I mean, there was a place to sign up for public comment, which occurs more in the beginning, uh, of the meeting.
I did sign up for the scratch my name on, because I thought public comment is, is, um, comment from such a, from last meetings, or previous meetings. If I leave public comment in that, I would definitely be a one.
And that was what we stated in the last meeting, I'm here to wave to the end and then we get public comment, that's what we stated.
We do have two names on there, Cynthia, I haven't, I haven't recorded.
But there's, they scratched them all. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give each of you your, your three minutes to, to speak. Ms. Pram, you?
Well, give me the city's, y'all, a favor.
No problem.
But, uh, you know, my whole thing about what you just said, we went to a meeting, we recommended this, they recommended that, but without due respect, we were not at that meeting. We don't know if y'all recommend it, or they recommend, but come to you when they're gonna do it, but we've been dealing with this for, for years. And when you say, oh, it takes time to do stuff, I don't know how much time, much more you need, because water is not going around. Water is not messing up through driveway, water is not running over and, and making our houses mess up, damaged. It's not doing that. We in Charlotte community have been doing, dealing with this for years. And y'all are telling us the same thing, whoa, we're gonna get on it, we're gonna work on it. I guess you want us to wash the lathe first. And then on top of that, you come to break this, uh, apartment complex up there, whatever it is, that nobody knows about, really, you just see something building. And then that, that on top, that makes the situation worse. What y'all did about maybe a month ago, you came and it was all running in my yard, right? It was like a pool, still is, I mean, a pool, still is.
Ma'am, I can't imagine one to all council members.
And then, what you did, you came and you diverted the water to the other side of the street. And y'all told my son who's on the porch today, well, if it doesn't work, it should work, but if it don't work, get hold of the city. Now, if somebody says something like that, they know it's not gonna work. Cause I still have water running in my yard. And then if you look at the other side where the other side of the street, it looks like a, a, a pool, that's, that's just like a river. A brown river. And then it doesn't go all the way down to the creek, it comes back around on the street on the other side. From not being as known. So if you could just tell us what meeting y'all had and what the recommend, and whatever, maybe we'll understand. So we don't want to.
Okay, okay, uh, yeah, and which I didn't, I didn't mention this, that, uh, when, when I met, or when we met with them, uh, in the conversation that we had, that's, that's their next step. Is their recommendations on what they, you know, suggest be, be done. And when, when that occurs, uh, hopefully they will be here, uh, at the next, uh, council meeting to present uh, what they, what they suggest or recommend.
Mayor, I think she says times on behalf of Mr. Pram, adverse facts. What that means is that it occurs in general recommendation by a competent license that has a negative impact on the value of real estate, significantly reducing the structure of integrity, improving to the real property, presenting that significant health risk to the occupants of that property. I believe that this meets adverse facts in every sense. The community of Todd Street will like present to the city of Charlotte actual invoices of what is damaging to their property. We know that the city of Charlotte's already paid for someone already. So we would like the same thing to this community too. As you can see in those pictures from the left-hand side, that red dirt, it comes from one place. Ms. Beverly, if you have two minutes up, you, or one minute up, you are appreciated.
Ms. Beverly?
Yes, well, I just gave you some pictures of my yard. I don't even have a yard anymore, it's nothing but rocks in my yard, of course, getting washed down to my yard. I mean, my brother tried to mow my yard last week, he's Beverly. I can't mow your yard, too many rocks in it. My yard is full of rocks, not small rocks, but big rocks. So I don't even have a yard anymore. And it's a problem, I've got a drain that goes right down to the middle of my yard, trash. I rock and pick up trash every time it rains, cause it's all in my yard. And I'm just tired. I'm just tired. And this, it, it's a mess, my yard's a mess. Yeah, and I just want to clean up. I can't even mow it in there.
She yields her time to me, how much time do I have, Mr. Mayor?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, so very quickly, we were presented before the Charlotte and the committee invoices, three bids apiece on the damage to these people's property. Is in fact, as I stated earlier, it has been already submitted to another committee where a person had same damage and it was fixed. I asked you to look at adverse possession in the sense of that the coverage are not the size that was put in the, uh, civil engineering. The coverage is supposed to be eighteen, they're thirteen. So that needs to be fixed, cause that's causing one of the problems. All that red dirt, as well as Mr. Hagan, as well as City Pram, as well as Ms. Beverly, as well as Ms. Vaughn, all those members are having issues with their property. And that is called adverse fact. So if the committee will hear us in the next meeting, to get, to submit those in a working section that we would like to be in, so that we can resolve this. Thank you.
Swen and, and Ms. Beverly and, and Ms. Cynthia. Like I said, uh, it's, it's, it's my plan to, to fix the problem. To, to, to rectify. Hang on, Ms. Higgins, I'll have to, I'll ask you to wait till that, I, I apologize.
All right. If I can throw the table.
All right, that's, that's about, like, that's where we are, uh, right now with, with that, you know, trying to get that rectified and fixed correctly. Um, so we'll move on to the next item, uh, which is, uh, we mentioned briefly the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. Uh, I said, I'm asking any courage, uh, you to carry that, that home, look at it. Um, come up with some, I, I know that we, we've done things, uh, in the past, uh, to make improvements, things like that. You know, if you have any suggestions, uh, so forth, write those down and, uh, and hopefully we can and add that to the budget and, and make, and do whatever we can continue to do for the city. Next thing on is the committee, uh, anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay. Next thing on, uh, the agenda is the committee reports, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Vanderbord, me, sort of, nothing else. Uh, finance, uh, hopefully we'll be getting the audit pretty soon. Hopefully, uh, my goal is to have it by the, uh, May meeting. Uh, that's, that's my goal. Uh, wastewater, uh, nothing to, to really let you chat not being here. I don't think that, uh, the state has come down yet and done any solar settles or anything out on the land that they, they claimed off uh, to help, uh, to expand drip fields, uh, street and bridges. I see, I see. I don't know. I guess I, I won't, I won't include, I'm not going to include the Todd Street, cause that street's going to get repaid. But if you, some odd year are out there riding around, you see potholes, let, let us know where they're at. Uh, I mean, it just makes it so much easier, I know, I know occasionally I tell the guys where I've seen two or three, they, they try to fix them. So, I mean, like I said, you know, Todd Street, uh, once, once we get hopefully that problem resolved, that entire street from forty-eight, highway forty-eight, all the way down to the low water bridge will be repaid. Uh, street lights, signs, um, I don't know.
We have new city limit signs.
Okay, they're here, okay.
And we have a sign order for most crossing at, um, next. That's a day.
Okay. Um, I don't think, you know, I don't think Raleigh has fixed our street lights, he'll, under squared or not. Uh, I may reach out to somebody else.
They need to be fixed for the festival, or the city can alter it.
Yeah. Uh, public safety? Mr. Chief, you have anything?
I, I was gonna ask you about the, uh, the resealing of the parking lot, the repaving of the parking lot. Kenny mentioned something about possibly repaving it, bringing the resealing. I didn't know if you talked to anybody about that.
Now, the only thing, um, that I can recall was it, was it after this year's paving, resurfacing that they said something about ceiling, ceiling man? So I, I, that's as far as I know, but.
I knew Kenny had prices on it, but I wasn't sure, just, cause we, we had to house our Saturday night, or Saturday afternoon, and we cleaned hoes Sunday, the hoes was just as dirty, but, you know, cleaning as it was before we cleaned it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a.
I think that's about all I've really got.
Yeah, okay, we'll, maybe we can do that, you know, for the next budget year, to get that spot repaid. Uh, parks and recreation, um, hopefully this little planned trail behind city hall is finally moving. Uh, not, nothing like I wanted to hopefully do, but anyway, maybe all that we get is just a, a trail from all of this side road down to about four or five parking places with a couple of picnic tables down there and some decorative street lighting as well.
Pre-construction meetings, April twenty-fourth, bids are turned in on May fifth.
Yeah. Uh, beautification. Um, landscapers have started, which is about the only thing I know from who, who's responsible for the landscaping for the welcome to Charlotte signs coming in? The same guys? Okay. Uh, next one, planning and zoning?
They didn't have a meeting because of the weather, and then they rescheduled it, and I think there's gonna be a more of a training meeting coming up on the May first, I won't be there.
Time change is four P M.
Yes.
Make note of that.
Always or just?
Yeah, right.
Always.
Is that on your six?
No, the planning and zoning will be at four from now on. More or less otherwise. Uh, construction, nothing, city's not involved in anything, initiate construction, ambulance service. Um, I think the only thing I know to report on that is that they're transferring or moving to their building down on the U-Bank property has been delayed because of some restrictions or some codes that the state fire marshal requires. So I think the county's gotta do quite a bit more, uh, work down there than than they, uh, were thinking then. Uh, as we mentioned, planning and zoning, uh, May first, the four P M wastewater meeting. Uh, May thirteenth at three P M. Uh, special call meeting over the budget, May thirteenth at five P M. And, uh, next council meeting will be May twenty-seventh at six P M.
Will be a working session again?
No, you know, this is just the.
Thank you.
That's it. Get right on me, yeah. And we'll, we'll just deal with.
There will be a public hearing that day. On May twenty-seventh. So every, if everything goes well in May.
So you're gonna be here at five forty-five, right? Then the next meeting.
I, I intend to land on.
Yeah, yes.
May twenty-seventh at five forty-five.
Yes. Yeah, we won't, but, but we can, I mean, if it gets to the point where we could, I see.
Department of Energy, May eighth, on this vote.
Huh?
Department of Energy, May eighth, on this vote on the day.
Okay.
Well, we have a special call, then then we'll have.
Well, that's not with your, your budget meeting, it's just that, as I understand, it's a work session, just for clarity, May the thirteenth, it's just a work session.
I, I thought we were having, I thought.
That's what you all.
I mean, we can just make it a work session.
I'm just seeking clarity.
Instead of a special call meeting, make it a work session. I mean, it's not any difference.
Well, there is a difference. You plan on having the budget that we're gonna vote on, I guess, difference, right? Work session, we don't vote on anything?
Correct.
I mean, we may not be, we may not have anything ready to vote on. Just do a work session.
On May thirteenth.
Yeah.
At five o'clock.
Anything else? Steve make the motion, we adjourn, second. Chris second, is it? All those in favor?
Jen, run.